At the next meeting or whatever we're gonna do. We'll move right to the comprehensive plan. And I'd like to talk about the goals, objectives and policies update. Before we go into the two components, next components tonight. Anybody have any? Well, yeah, okay, first of all. We have. The changes that were made through the last meeting. Which I think we've kind of agreed on. And least informally and then. We have the changes that are made by Dave. Which are basically format changes. Is that right, Dave?
Um, there were. I'll just say one or two changes I made that probably went beyond. Simply formatting. Um, there was, well, there was one change I made. Both are in the transportation section if you want to talk about it. Uh, one was I incorporated a suggested policy. That we had received from. Somebody in the public, I forget who it was, the gist of the policy was that the county will. Coordinate with other jurisdictions in the county to ensure that traffic flows as efficiently as possible throughout the county. And I thought that was a worthwhile thing to do. If if the rest of you don't like it, we can take it out, but I thought it made sense. At the boundaries of places like Sandpoint and Priest River, it probably makes sense to have some coordination.
Let's let's take a look.
Where can we find Dave's changes?
You have to go to.
Where did you, I, where did you? Yeah, I emailed them to you this morning, obviously, I don't know which you, where you put them.
You have to go to August thirtieth. And then go to the, to the file number. And then once you click on that, go to, go down to applications. And you'll see all of various. So what would the date on the file be? Oh.
Um, no, it's, it's.
Oh, with Dave.
No, yeah, that one, that one.
No wonder we're not. I see. So. The light blue.
So just so you guys, I've explained this a couple, to a couple folks, but the purple. What what Swati did is she replicated. Each paragraph, whether it was a goal and objective or a policy in purple. And she asked me to make my edits there, so you'll see the original paragraph that we had agreed to informally through last meeting. Then below that, you'll see an exact copy of it. Which in some cases haven't been changed, but in other cases I've made edits to that copy. And my edits show up in red, at least in the word, the word version.
So we're looking at transportation.
Yeah, both of the ones that I had questions about were in transportation. No, transportation, straight up.
So the the change that you just referred to is to communicate and work cooperatively, so on and so forth?
Yes, that's one of them.
An electoral editorial. Um, yeah, what's the other one, Dave?
The other one was, um. There was a policy that says a mechanism for ensuring the maintenance of private road systems should be developed and imposed on new developments to reduce the likelihood of the roads becoming a burden to the taxpayers. I mean, on reflection, my opinion is I'd like to delete that altogether. Um, I, I, one of the questions I had, and I don't know, you guys may know the answer, is there any record of that or or history of that kind of thing happening in the county? Cause it should be. So is it a problem that even needs a solution? I, I couldn't imagine how, I mean, I, I know the county, there are county owned roads that the county chooses not to maintain. So it's hard for me to envision how the county would be forced into a position of maintaining a public road, I mean, a private road. And as the editorial, I happen to live on a private road and. It happens that when they try to set up the road association, they blew it and so they're not able legally to force any of us to participate or pay dues or anything, so it's become voluntary. And that's actually a very interesting situation because I think it puts a nice check and balance on what the group decides to do, because if if some people try to go overboard. A lot of people are just to say, okay, we'll pay it, we'll pay the dues, right? So they have to be reasonable.
Well, I think, I think that the intent of this. Was to, um. If you have a, like a development. That say as a private road, maybe it's a cul-de-sac or whatever. Um, that. The developer would then be required. To prepare either CCNRs that would uh pertain to maintenance of the road or. There would be a shared. Shared maintenance agreement among. That would be reported against the laws.
Well, of course, that's not really. One of my observations would be that that's not really what that says. It, it says that the county is going to develop some mechanism, whatever that is, and then it's going to tell private developments, this is what you have to do. And. I would argue with both of those, first, I don't think the county should be telling. I don't think the county should be in the business of telling people how to maintain private roads at all. They're private roads. And 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 they certainly shouldn't be telling them, you have to do something, and then beyond that saying, this is what I'm going to tell you, you have to do, you have to have CCNRs that look like this or. Whatever that may be, and again. It doesn't appear that it's a problem. It doesn't appear that there's a history of. Private roads being developed in the county that then somehow the county gets put into a position where they have to maintain. It's, it's, it's a private, it's a private matter between the landowners to live on private roads, but there are public roads that are privately maintained.
Right.
Yes, there are, so. That's not what this addresses.
Well. Couldn't. Could it be?
Okay, so this is private road systems, it's pretty, pretty explicit.
In my opinion, I see, I see what you're saying, so why don't we, how about if we change it to say?
I, I'm not entirely sure, but I think.
So.
That are privately maintained.
I think somewhere in our, in our road standards, private road standard that says that. When our engineers are asking for. Rowings or looking to approve those roads, somewhere in it says that. They have to provide a construction or a road maintenance agreement. I'm not entirely sure about this. But I believe it's there in a balance.
I'm thinking of. A specific. Uh, development that I'm aware of, that's not yet been approved, but. And that the road that would service like five, well, like six or seven lots. Is a public road. It seems to me that in order to make sure that that doesn't become a county obligation, there's be. Some mechanism. Required that. You could say publicly wrote, privately maintained, that it is privately maintained. And uh, either through a shared. Maintenance agreement or nothing. So at present, the county code says. Unless you build your road. To full county standards, public standards. It cannot be accepted for maintenance.
Even then, it doesn't have to be accepted into the.
Right, that's, that's the thing.
Yeah.
It's up to the commissioners, if they want to take on the burden, they can, they don't have to.
Right.
But I think they don't. Want to, you know, many cases, so. But they, but they still want to be a public road and. I, I frankly, I, I don't. I've never totally grasped the, the rationale for having the public right of way and and privately maintained road. What benefit is there? Really, to anybody.
Possibly for future, future expansion of their transportation system.
Access. Yeah, I mean, it, it, it sounds like it, but it's never happened. For private road. You can gate it. Right. If it's a public road, you cannot, however. I can list five or six. Public right of way privately maintained roads that are posted private. They're not gated. Yeah, but they're posted private.
Which are public?
Yeah.
Well, then they're posted wrong.
Yeah, it's posted wrong, but. Uh, county didn't go up until he said. I mean, if the intent was, okay, someday it could be brought up to full county standards. Uh, very seldom, I, I don't know that it's ever happened. To my recollection.
That's not, that's not what this is about, this is just.
Pardon me?
They accepted like three roads this year over the recent period. First time in a long time, but they have done it.
But those were.
They're, they're county owned privately maintained, like five to standard.
Really? Okay.
Where were those? There's a subdivision of Priestland area. And it was this summer, beginning of summer.
Cause there was that one that was south of Coolin. And it came off and and we, we, it came through here four or five years ago. And we recommended, cause they were trying to go to public, I remember that now. And the alignment was not good for public, so they changed it. And it goes, it goes all the way to the end parcel and. Yeah, okay, I remember that. So that. Yeah. I, where I was, what I thought this was about was. Where you have a public road privately maintained, which there are. That if the developer chooses to go that route, or if that's what the county wants them to do. Then there should be a mechanism so that the homeowners. Don't have to argue and fight among themselves about the shared cost and maintain it, there will be a mechanism in place. That uh. Will be there when they use.
Well, so, I mean, again, that's, again, that's not what this says, because it specifically is only about private roads and. Uh, I, I think my, again, my feeling is that I'm not sure the county needs to do that. Cause I don't think the county bears any risk that they're going to be forced to make me a road that they don't want to, as, as has been noted, they. They're free to choose which of the public roads they bring into the maintenance system and which they don't. And. And they have some criteria for that, but they can, you know, about whether the road meets their standard or not, but they can also choose to snuff it even if it doesn't meet their standards, so.
So if we change this though, to say. Uh, well, the roads privately maintained. Should be the goal.
Uh, how could the county get involved in? That. Let's take my road, for example, how is the county going to supervise what happens on my road?
They aren't. But it's not, it's not a new development. Do, do you think that that shared road agreement that you guys have, if it was written better? It would be a good thing?
Um, you know, I, I'm not sure. Truth.
Because I, I see this language helping put those shared road agreements in place, and if they're written right, effectively, they can be a positive thing, but. I think they can be as bad if they're done wrong.
About as far as I would think the county should go if they wanted to, and again, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but would be maybe to offer. Uh. A model agreement, let's say. Here, here's what we would suggest, if you, if somebody comes in and they're talking about. A development where they're going to have some private roads. Like I said, here's, here's an agreement that we have, but my guess is if I searched on the internet, I could probably.
You could go on your recorders.
Fifty seven, yeah, right, right. And by the way, just for clarity, ours, it's not about the agreement, they, they, they failed to correctly incorporate the requirement to participate into everybody's. This was active, they named the road wrong, they rate, they named the road maintenance wrong, they named it after a different road.
Well, but I think that's.
But it works well, actually, we get good participation and, you know, most people, the, most people contribute the dues and 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 I think it actually serves as a check to keep the dues in line, because. If if they went out of line, everybody could just say, well, wait, okay, I'm not paying it back.
So you guys actually have an HOA?
No.
So you've got, you've got nature to participate in the road agreement, boy, you're lucky.
So, I mean, I don't. I think a shared road agreement is a good thing. Even, even if it's only kind of working.
But does it need to be imposed? That, that's, that's my, that's my beat, really.
Yeah. On a, I, this, yes, on a public road. Privately maintained.
Yeah, but this is a private.
But that's a situation then where the county is essentially shifting the maintenance requirement from themselves to the, the property owners who live on the road.
Exactly, yeah.
And and I, they, they, they could do that anywhere. You're gonna come up with something to say.
Uh, I don't know that they could do that anywhere, well, I think they would have to do it. When the, when the development occurs, when the, when it happens. I don't think you can go back and say, well, we're not, we're not going to maintain this anymore, you guys are going to have to. Have this shared agreement.
Yeah.
I guess this is for, that's why it says for new developments.
Yeah.
Is there? And I'm, I can't remember either in the road standards or in subdivision code. There's no requirement. Is there, or is there a requirement to have a public right of way privately maintained? That's just an option, right?
No, so road, so lots below five acres have to have an added access or frontage on public right of ways.
Okay, but above five, so six and above, or is it eleven and above?
Anything less than five has to be on. On the public.
Public access. So that's four point nine five or less. Ask them, so there's where the public right of way comes in. But above that. If it's six or more. Is. Totally private, if there's no public access.
There is no requirement. People can still choose to dedicate it to the public, but.
Yeah. Does it say, does the code say? That the subdivision itself must have access to a pub- public right of way?
Or five acres and greater?
Why is it that? Oh, a smaller development. Yeah. Requires public access in a larger one, it doesn't, doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense.
No, I think it does, because it's smaller. It's really intended to go along with the zoning. Right, so I think the intentions are five and larger zoning, zoning districts, you don't need to be directly on a public road, but suburban and transition in those, those denser districts, you do, because it generate more traffic.
So the difference, the opposite. If it's six or more, or five or more. Or six or more. Then it doesn't, it could be private. Yeah. It's reverse. It can, it can act by numbers, it's going to generate more than a four lot. NLD, right? It used to be, man, the nineties, it was, you had to have access to the boundary of your subdivision by openly construct the maintained category.
I think we have been, you see something here, it's not about the number of lots that I've been, it's about the. Size of the lots, so I'm saying. If you're, if you're creating dots that are five acres or less. They have to, they have to have a direct access on a public right of way. It's not about the number of lots, it's not about the.
So. Whether it's one lot, one or ten. So, so sorry, maybe the other said is five acres or smaller. But when you say less, it sounds like.
It's really smaller than five acres.
If you say less, it's like a lesser number.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's five acres or smaller, five acres or larger, so what if it's six, what was it, how was the sixth thing? Oh, that's. So six or more, what, lots, six or more acres?
Five or more. Five or more acres can be on a private road. Lots that are bigger can be on a private road, lots that are smaller or, there's developments, they have to be, they have to run down from the. Right.
Okay, so what this, this really, so that doesn't really pertain to what we're talking about here, we're talking really lots. The development, not, not. Yeah, large parcels.
I think, yeah, just to be clear, minor land divisions are an exception to this rule, because. Minor land divisions in general don't require a road to be put in. Uh, they only have to provide respects. So.
So I, so I, I'm, I'm, it's just what I'm thinking. I'm thinking of a six slot. Subdivision. That has, that there are, there are one acres each, one, one acre each, okay? And. The current requirement would be public road finally.
Public road definitely, yes, privately maintained, privately maintained is up to Bonny County Road Bridge. If they don't accept that public road into their maintenance system, then it will be directly, yes.
All right, so. What this is getting at, and maybe it's, we just can't get to it. Is. True to say. If you're going to do that, you're going to have six one acre lots on a road. Uh, and it's going to be privately maintained, then you have a mechanism in place to make sure it is.
I think that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well. You could say that, but again, that's not what it says right now, because right now it's all about private roads, which is a different situation, I understand Alan would like to address this, the case of the public roads that are privately maintained.
Right.
Essentially, then what you're going to do is force. Property owners in those circumstances into at least some form of. An HOA that at least address the road.
Or shared road, shared major.
Yeah.
Actually, I would like to correct myself, but earlier when I said that. There's probably something in the appendix of private road standards that require a road maintenance agreement, it's not in the private road standards. It's in the public road standards for private. Yeah, I, I remember that now.
So it is in the code?
It is in the code for public roads that are privately maintained, but it is in the one and only roads manual.
Okay, so we don't need this?
Yeah, it's, this is for private roads, this man kind of.
No, this, this, there wasn't, you know, well, I don't think it was intended to be. Private roads, these bars, I was concerned it was a public one, I believe. We can take it out. What do you need to do? Gone. Everybody agree?
To take it out?
Yeah.
I would agree.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
Uh, we're, were we okay with the? The new objective that I added, just to make sure, it's the last one in this version. Scroll up a bit.
It was fine with me, I.
It's right above the policies. This came, again, this came from a member of the public, I forget who it was, but I thought it was a good idea to communicate and work cooperatively, cooperatively with other jurisdictions within the county to ensure the best possible flow of traffic countywide. But I mean, I, I thought it was.
It's fine, it's fine with me, a nice idea, anybody have any objections? I'm just.
It's an objective.
Yeah. All right, so nobody else have objection? Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking practically. The putting this into effect. So another jurisdiction says, wow, the traffic coming out of Northeast County is, is killing highway two hundred. For what?
Well, I mean, that's just.
And that, that.
Like to cooperate, if they don't, they don't.
Yeah. Time to communicate and work cooperatively.
Nobody wants to cooperate, then things don't. So, so then somebody, somebody in the public who's concerned about a subdivision up in Northeast County comes back and says, this, this objective says you're supposed to coordinate and. And it implies doing something about it, you're not doing anything, don't approve something.
Well, we also have, we have other objectives and policies that say that we don't want new developments to degrade. The, the service level.
Yeah.
For existing users, so that theme. Frankly, is already mixed in here, it's in a number of places.
It is, and again, it's uh. What service level? If it says exist. Which I don't know that it does. This is degrading, it used to say beyond, something beyond.
This was just a suggestion from one of the public emails that you, you liked, and that's why you added it?
Nothing more complicated than that.
Right, I just wondered if you saw anything else in it that was advantageous or.
Well.
A selling point?
I, I mean, again, I, I think it's a good idea, I mean, we've, we've. At the boundaries between the, the various jurisdictions in the county and the county and the, and the county itself, there can be traffic issues and all I'm saying, I mean, I thought it was a good idea, it just says. You guys all work together to try and ensure that traffic flows smoothly. It's, it'll be like in and out of Sandpoint, in and out of Priest River.
I mean, I, I think that the idea is great, but I spent a year and a half trying to put together city county meetings and. And get people together, and I would have had a better time trying to get the Pashtun tribes of Afghanistan together and agree on something than. Because each has its kind of their own rules and way they do things, and they're happy to get together and break bread and hang out, and then they go home and do what they want, so. I read that and I'm, it feels good, it sounds like something my grandma would say, like, now remember your manners, but I don't. Yeah, I don't think it needed some. I don't know that it would ever. Produce anything.
But does it hurt to have it in?
It just doesn't hurt anything, just because it's hard, I don't think is a good reason to take it out. Or not.
And it always hasn't been. Well, except for like in dawn scenario, you know, it becomes an expectation. Yeah. Um, that the county itself did, as long, as long as that's. We keep seeing that, now, even then, so somebody raises it at a hearing, it's probably not going to go. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be the rationale for denying a subdivision because we did coordinate with, with city cootney over it. This isn't an obligation of a developer. No, see, that's jurisdiction, but I, I, yeah, so that's the old part of the discussion, all those things that apply to the jurisdiction, these goals and policies. What do we do with them, they're not land use regulation, maybe land use action, maybe? But. If you want to get strictly speaking, this is a land use code. So. Our land use, it's a conflict, it is a, it comes out of the. Does anybody feel strongly about? Moving it or can we leave it? I, I don't, I, I think it's fine. Yeah. I would keep. Consistent with the right, likewise about. Yes, yeah, it, there is a flow. That thought all the way through. Okay, anybody else, Josh, or you?
No, I appreciate you letting me uh. Go on a journey in my mind.
You're always welcome to do. Did you come back?
Come back, oh, good.
Are you back in the process?
Yeah.
I see another comment up here, um, actually, yeah. Under Bonny County intentions.
Under where, Alan?
Uh, we just go up a couple.
Yeah, there were some places where I had some questions and. Couldn't resolve them in my own mind, there's one just above here. Bonny County intends for certain intense land use developments to provide pay roads. I don't know if we can define that better, or maybe that's just something you have to leave.
I think we tried to do that and we couldn't, and we ended up with the tits.
Yeah. Just the question if that's.
You have others? Um. Let's see, another one.
They probably do.
There was one.
I guess I had envisioned that on the twentieth, we would be going through this, but. Uh, I don't know.
Well, what I, you know, what I would like to see us do is to have a document in which, you know, we're not going to make any material changes. On.
Okay, let me, let me do a quick scan, because there were a few other places where I had comments similar to that. When you just.
Well, you got the first, first low point of the policy, not sure what this means, upset by. Well, you got the first, first bullet point of the policy, right, not sure what this means, upset by.
Yeah.
You know, that's. Why even this policy? If there's impact created by the development, developer, it's developer's responsibility to look for mitigation. This implies that, oh, there's impact in this development, go figure it out.
That's, well, it's a, this is the offset impacts.
Well, right, offset impact, impact mitigation, that's what offsets are, they're offsetting the impact. But is it the county's responsibility to do that? That's what this implies, the county should review opportunities. Well, who brings up the opportunities? The developer?
It's the same to me that if you have an op, if somebody has a. As a, uh, development that's going to impact future users and transportation system, that. Uh, they should consider opportunities to, to offset that by direct development. It, it just, it doesn't put the burden on, on the developer, developers. Must, because the county is the one that's gonna be putting the. Was cursed to the developer. Well, yeah.
In, in public services, we, we say that a little bit more explicitly. And we, we basically say that we're gonna require developers to. To do that.
Yeah, the first step, Captain.
It's similar to that, right?
Yeah.
But, but in, in the, in the realm of public services. And, and to me, if, if mitigate is what we meant by offset for clarity, I would suggest you should say mitigate.
Yeah. I think it should, that's one consistent word. That's what this is all about. You impact the service, you provide mitigation. Sure, the county's gonna look at it and see whether or not it passes muster.
I think mitigates ones.
But why? This, this, this one in transportation seems to turn it around.
Yeah.
So why not just, I think it does say in there, if you impact the road system, you're gonna have to provide mitigation. Or offset it, typically underneath, but offset means. If I wanna do it my way, here's the impact. Now I can offset that by doing a lesser development or a lesser proposal. That's what it means underneath.
Or we're not dealing with it.
No, but it's a word that, that means something underneath, but it doesn't necessarily mean something here, so mitigate, you know, is a federal.
Right, environmental, yes, to be a federal nexus. Alright, so, so why, but I don't, I don't see any, but mitigate is fine. That help you?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, how about just going further? If this still says the county shall, will. Um, offset or opportunities. Provided by the developer to mitigate the impact of development. Suggested or offered by whatever.
Maybe it's, maybe there's something other than the developer.
Like what? We're talking land use. That's, that's the other part. How far is this comprehensive plan gonna be able to cure all the, the social ills of water county?
This is supposed to.
I can understand, I could see, you know, that it wouldn't necessarily be developed, or it could be an alteration of use.
Well, that's a develop. That's a, that's a land use action, it's a land use.
So. Where the county will review opportunities. It all fits under development, so.
Yeah, so to offset or to. Opportunities. Proposed by. A developer. To mitigate the impacts. Well, the county will review opportunities to mitigate the impacts of land use actions to current users from future users. And, okay.
Yeah, I mean, Dave, I'm sure this means.
Well, so I, I have another problem with the whole construction, the way it's written, um. Are we just gonna review opportunities?
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay, we got five opportunities, that's nice.
Thank you very.
Or we can actually do something about it. I mean, because this doesn't say as a policy, we're gonna require.
Right, so back to the public services, which is kind of the, the overshadow of all of this. How is it worded there? It talks there about. Development's gonna pay its way.
Yeah.
If development absolutely must impact the system, they're gonna pay for remediation, they're gonna pay for offset.
Well, if it's in public services, why do we need it here?
Good question.
As long as we're clear, when we get around to definitions at some point, that, that includes roads.
And it does, well, I have to go to the state. The state code and looks and see roads, they, they, oh, their development should be actively served by roads. So therefore that falls under that section. To say, if you impact any of those services, you're gonna pay your way out of it or modify your development to not affect.
That's what it seems to say. We wanna see if we need this and.
Yeah, it seems to bring up a lot of gray areas that are harder to find, to find.
Should we wanna take this out?
We should now, right there, that's, that.
The one in transportation, the one in transportation. Because we have this one in public services.
I, yeah, I would think so.
Alright, what do you mean that the transportation, I'm, I'm looking at the transportation on it, and there's a lot of things in there that I'd like to see changed, someone makes suggestions. Get to it. What, and where, in, in the overall transportation section, that I'm reviewing over the phone, so.
Oh, you mean the text?
Yeah, the text. Which is potentially going to be the goal.
Well, if you have some ideas about goals, then you should give them to us now.
Other than this, this very thing, so.
Okay, so, so we all agree, we're gonna take this out in our transportation.
The entire? Or will of.
Just that, just the first bullet point, first policy, first policy bullet point of transportation. Any others?
From, from me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Give me a minute, well, one I know I can find in population. It seemed to me that. We had a goal and an objective that were fairly redundant. Um, so I did, I did. Suggest an alternate objective. Um, which I wasn't wild about, but. I mean, this, the, the goal right now, I changed it to read, ensure the impact of demographic changes, including generational issues. And economic diversity are identified and considered during planning activities and decisions. Then if I was gonna leave the objective in there, I, you can see it's on screen, so you can see it's almost the same thing, really. So. To me. That jumped out as. Redundant to what shouldn't be there.
Doesn't seem to be redundant, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Except for that way too. The information.
Oh, yes, there is a, there, that's two when.
Yeah, you went in other direction.
Yeah.
Uh, we process it.
And there was at least one other I wanted to chat about.
Let's just stay on this one, so, I think that's fine, I think it is redundant, I think.
That word between your maintain.
Yeah, that one, right there.
Between two and when, information.
Information to when.
Should need to utilize the information when making land use decisions, there you go. Okay, um, there's one other one, I need.
So are we getting rid of this one?
We'll get rid of that one.
Yes.
Yeah. And even, even Dave's comment about the goal of objectives, I would just put it in the, to suggest. Right, so then you go down, while you go down to objectives, and what you've got there, and whatever that color is, yellow. That would be the objective.
I'm running out of feathers.
And the others would be gone. Okay? So the only objective would be maintain current projected county populations. So you take out the editorial comments, or? Yeah, and actually everywhere, but then the, the red goes out too.
Yeah. Which, that, that should be clear to her, the way she structured the document. Um. The next one that might be worth a discussion was in natural resources. And, um. We had a policy. That said, protect water quality by creating standards for development, you post proximity, proximity to shorelines. And I was wondering if shoreline is the right word there. I, I was wondering if waterways or.
And so it goes back to a definition, I think. Because we talked about that last time, because it did say something before, and I think we agreed that shoreline covered them all. But is that proofed out by the definitions? Whether you're on a creek, whether you're a river, whether you're a lake, a puddle, a stream. Shoreline.
Probably not a puddle.
If we're okay with shorelines, I'm okay with it, I just was questioning my, is that, is that really right word to use or not?
There's not a lot of development around the puddle.
Right. Um. I think that's, those are the only ones where.
Title fourteen is shoreline management.
It is.
No, we have it in the document as well.
Yeah, but I mean, title twelve, title fourteen is shoreline management.
Title fourteen is land being developed.
Right, so that's all your comments, Dave?
As far as things that pretty clearly in my mind went beyond just formatting for, to improve the style or the clarity. Or the consistency, yes, obviously I made a lot of order changes, but everything else, I think, doesn't really.
Shorelines up on the board, see. Any lake, river, stream, canal, body of water, puddle.
Puddles are?
And I did catch, I forget which, when you guys sent the comment about where we missed industrialized, I did, I think I was in this. Every other paragraph, you say commercially, doesn't have commercial industrial, so anyways, just needs.
Okay, so that's, so now can we then, are there any, if there's any editorial comments that are still in there, Dave, we could eliminate those?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a sassy comment about one very long paragraph, but.
You don't wanna share them?
It was in community designs.
Alright, so, uh, if there's, you know, I, what I like to do is, like I said before, is, is. Basically have no material changes. Unless we receive public comments.
I think it was a policy in community design that was about, I think, mentioned everything in the plant. I was concerned it was a bit on the tourist side.
Okay. Alright, so then I think we're set to review this again with the public on the twentieth.
I did have a question, um, about community design, we have both objectives and policies for, for this chapter, but we don't have any. Because we did not, we did not put that chapter, you will discuss in the, in the timeline or you're made of the.
I'm not sure what you're saying. It wasn't, it's one of, it wasn't one of. I know.
So.
What are we gonna say? Well, that's a question, it's just. I don't know that there, what's she say?
So.
Yeah, well, well, how about if we consider that one? That's not one of the components that we were talking about tonight, so.
No, it's, but we haven't put it in, we suggested timeline for the data to confidence inside.
Okay. Where, so where?
Do you want me to put it in the timeline?
Yeah. Where is that, why? Are you looking for it?
That, that's what I'm saying, community design is not in here.
It's not, it's not.
Because we didn't have one last time around.
Yeah, there's no write-up for that component, all of ours goes. And that's the way it was.
Yeah, do you know offhand, sorry, did any of the subarea plans have a community design section?
I can't remember, it's like.
Yes. We're certainly talking. I think they might have. Say it.
Yeah, because of, of landscaping and stuff. But we did talk about that, but was there any community design section or was that, that's where.
That's where it was. Turn that section, kind of like. Meaning design and analysis of needs for governing landscaping, building design, tree planning, signs and suggested patterns and standards for community design.
I think, I think we put that in economic development, maybe when we were talking about commercial developments.
Yeah, it makes sense. That was all the stuff on the highway.
We wanted screening and stuff, so. And and I think frankly, it it exists in our economic development section here. You see policies that talk about screening. I don't know if that's the right place for it, or if we should move that, but.
It used to be. It used to be part of the conference. But wasn't number two thousand, you know, well, and as far as from two thousand two and on, it's. I know that was because. We did some cycle development back in ninety seven and it was in the county code that.
How much of a county function is that really?
Now, it's more frankly. It's more of an urban setting kind of thing. What I just read right out of the state's poll. It has urban setting flavor. Which is probably why maybe, or even why it was not. It may have been dispensed with, but if it was, then the pop plant should say why that, but there's goals. There's goals that were established. In the implementation, but so there's gold. Yeah, you know, what what justifies these goals, where they go. That's half of our exercise now. Wait a minute, these goals seem to come from the text of that report. Let's go on. Any component. So. Well, somebody wanted to try out. Grab some chapters for that. Analysis of the needs for governing landscape building design. Is there a need? That's what it's talking. So what are our goals in that section?
A goal, we have one goal. It's to enable a variety of lifestyles while maintaining the rural character of the future development of Bar County. So it's really about maintaining rural character ultimately.
Yeah.
And and I think the only thing, I mean, objectives, go to objectives. Uh, new development should be located in areas with similar densities and compatible uses. The adverse impacts of new development on adjacent areas should be minimized. Consider the protection of natural resources, rural features and surrounding uses of the community in the design and location of new development. Those are the objectives.
Well, I'll take the crack at doing some checks on that. We'll slot that in. It's gonna be pretty brief. So what are we doing for the October? So fourth is is school. And what else? This natural resources. The eighteen is the big transportation in. So, oh. As is especially recent sites, especially them. So that's September. Azure series, October.
That might be a reasonable, we hazardous area shouldn't be too long. Transportation might be.
I may not be here on the eighteenth, so. Fourth. And it's only one on on September twentieth, yes. Oh, the the document itself, yeah, you'll. Okay.
The document is pretty much. Going to remain the same and not going to be a whole lot of discussion on twentieth, then. Probably community design can go on twentieth. If that is not.
Okay. Okay, so let's move to. The discussion of the two components we have tonight. Think property rights first. Let me tell you what I did there. I reviewed the property rights and it's almost entirely a legal analysis. I don't think the law has changed. So I didn't change it. What I did. And this is something that we need to discuss. Is I added. At the end, I obviously took out the balls, objectives and policies from that previous one. And I put ours. That's all I did. But I think I don't have days. In here, so when I, when I, when I did this. I didn't have days, I just swat is. This is why he's. Document that she gave today. I just, I thought I thought it was days, so. Right. But what I would do is, is basically. I I don't know if there's any changes, Dave, to this one.
Nothing's, nothing substantive for sure.
So, you know, if there's, if there's some editing changes, we can make those appear, but. Has anybody got any um? Any comments with regard to this section? We should do this, or we should do that, or we should do something differently? Nothing has changed the legal standpoint. I was gonna ask Bill Wilson to review this, but. So, so right, the the. Property rights. As it's written up now. Deals entirely with. The nineteen eighty four mandate, it was, it was performed in nineteen eighty four to the attorney general's test. All of the goals that we have right now. Um, they allude to that, but then there's a whole bunch of other stuff that enters into it, affecting the neighbor and all this kind of stuff. Should there be some language in the text that talks about those things in support of those? Obviously, I didn't think so, because I didn't put it in there, so. Yeah, so that means, I mean, potentially then if. When we get to. A totally new document. Are these goals that we've now worked on? And they still retain. Because there's nothing in the text. That they're based on. These are general principles and property rights. Your bundle of sticks and so forth, and you don't hurt your neighbor and so forth. But there's nothing in the text that directly supports. Well, that's all, it's all basically derives from. From legal standpoint. The legal analysis was put in place so that a regulatory taking was addressed. If the code was so arrest that it hurt you, you could, you could either. By by application of a requirement or just a code change itself. You could appeal that and the takings analysis would be done. To prevent. Regulatory takings. Most of those policies and goals talked about neighbor A can't hurt neighbor B. It says. Check copyrights enhance property values to the national use plan that complies with state law. Okay. That's the goal. Private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation. Right. It's actually property should be taken into account considering manager's proposal, policy codes. That's, that's one of their. That uh, Bar County shall follow the three guideline, Rachel's guideline. Land use decisions by advice back shall be adopted, blah blah blah. Property rights of the applicant joining a favorite landowners future should be considered. Maybe those aren't mentioned in the text. Right there. Well, they are now because this calls and policies are in the text. Now. You know, we've got. Text which is part of the analysis upon which you got conclusions. And then from that you state goals and objectives. Should be a trail to follow. You know, which has been part of our problem because. Some of the goals and objectives have not been borne out by the text of the component and people have picked up on that. Either way. Wait a minute, where did this come from? Or there's something over here in the text that doesn't show up in the goals. Wait a minute, you're supposed to be doing this. You haven't even included as a goal. And they cry foul. So. Uh, we've talked about this since day one. The trail and follow. Texting the component, the analysis. Conclusions, goals, policies, objectives, goal. I mean, all the, all the things that deal with don't affect, don't impact your neighbor and so forth. Those are all good. And I don't think it would be hard to. State some of that in addition to the attorney general's test checkers. Because they're, they're very broad, general. Public or private property right discussion. Well, if you don't consider that um. Property rights of the applicant adjoining and nearby landowners should be duration should be considered. That's not a property, that it shouldn't be in the section of law. It shouldn't be in this. Not that it should be in the text, it shouldn't be in here at all. But we have plenty of comments from the public that says. You know, we want to see that, right? So, so. How hard would it be to put some language in the text? What are you gonna say? Just that uh, should we just take this out and put it in the test? And leave it here too? It's not strictly property rights. Yeah. I don't have a problem with putting it in there, but. I don't see the need to do it. I I don't think, I don't think we have to have a direct. You've talked out of this, but I I don't think you need to have this direct line. Well, it it's just that it's, it's. Our experience, at least over the last seven years. There's been a number of cases where people have. Even tried to see that in the pop plan and it's not there and then. The issue is going to get a slant because of the goal and policy objectives of protocol. Right, the way they're. They have a problem with what, how this is worded, make sure we learn this, add, add something to the text. What are your suggestions? Some, one of us in the past. Mentioned how property rights were sampled. But maybe now you're looking at Cooney County. Yeah. Yeah, I think their language touches on all those things. It goes broader than just the attorney generals in the text. Well, that's just, that's just the language for a policy. But we didn't include, include it. We have modified it, but. Oh, it may have been more fun. We're not making any progress here, guys. Somebody else that talks about this? You feel that there should be this trail to follow in all of our components? Here's the text which allows to back and then analysis. And conclusions, goals, policies, objectives, which going to lead to code. Should that? Easy and fallible trail be there?
Ideally, I would say yes. I'm not sure what the foundation. Of what you would write that would support those other. Objectives and policies would be in this case.
Right, because.
Unless it's the public comment. Or, you know, it doesn't have to be just public comment, but what we heard from the public. About desire to at least consider impacts neighboring properties.
Yeah.
Um, just that's, I mean, that that could be written, obviously, we can say, you know, in the course of. Developing this, we, we heard comments from members of the public about effect and therefore. Therefore, we included. The following uh, objectives and policies.
Okay, I can do that. I could put that in there. Yeah, just make reference. That's, that's what. What facts, what facts are you basing the goals on? Well, we heard from the public. We don't want to be hurt by our neighbors. We want to have respect for any, we want them to have respect for us. And so, there's other people that expanded that as far as property rights, or even. Uh, the public has property rights and somebody can't diminish those property. It's really getting. I think beyond the realm of. But just that, just, here's the threat. Alright, I can change that.
And and to me, it's kind of a different way of thinking about the vague two-way street.
Yeah.
Comment that we took out because it was vague. And we decided what was really intended was you consider the impacts to the neighboring neighbors as well. That's the other way of looking at the street, right, so.
Okay.
I mean, public comment would be one potential foundation for. The objectives and policies you've got here.
Now, there's one. Look at the five area plans. Every committee just went whole hog on private property.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, not really. Well, there's not a lot, you know, I went, I went through every subarea. Well, I mean, I, I know, again, maybe, you know, Josh, I sat through how many of these?
Yeah, but most, well, okay. I know you sat through them, but what, what came down on paper was basically the code.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah. And the attorney general's guidelines. That's what, that's what people, that's what the subarea plan had. I mean, if there had been something else in there, I would have put it in.
Yeah, true.
Because I, I think that, that it was a hot topic for sure. We talked about it a lot, but then there's what the county can actually. There was, there's the law, I mean.
Yeah, you know, and and when, you know, that directive, when you read through. What's in Lupa under property rights. And the biggest thing in there was that, that ordinance that. Code said attorney general come up with the test.
Yeah, I mean, it, it often seemed like in those meetings that it was kind of a wish list of. Uh, you know, hey. An HOA, and we should do this and we should do that, but then you boil it down and you're back to state statute and county code of what, what the law. Says and will allow, and so as it boils down here. Um, I think there's a limitation to what. You know, what we can. Put in, in this comprehensive plan that's. Actionable and, you know, relative.
If anything. That. Old public. Sentiment about, I don't want my neighbor to hurt me. Um, maybe better housed in the land use. But again, that's, that's the thing. Yes, you don't want to overtax. Public services with your proposal, but you also don't want to put any pressure on your neighbor, undue pressure on the neighbor. So that's where in that, in land use component, that's where my spot. Setbacks, talks about zoning. Setbacks, talks about zoning.
I think it's okay. We could, we could, I can just add something.
Okay.
It seems to make sense, and if we added that little bit. It would help clarify.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's what I see, so say, any other comments on that, or we go, can we go to recreation? Okay, Debbie.
Okay. Uh, the recreation chapter. To me, red like an, an outdoor guide to Bonner County. So I. Went back and reviewed the sub area plans and looked at all of their recreation. What was in their recreation chapters, and so I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at what I put in here in the red. But this is all taken out of various sub area plans. And I thought it tied back in well with the goals and policies and objectives that we came up with for recreation.
This is like top ten poses to visit and bottom one.
That's pretty much how the chapter reads right now, I mean. That's all there is, campgrounds, fishing sites, places to speed, that there is nothing in there. There's basically no text in that chapter at all. Except for the one little paragraph in black that starts this component includes an analysis. That starts before part of chapter one. So that's the only thing that I did not put in, and, and that could go. In front of what I put in in the red or after, doesn't matter, but what I put in was what's in red.
Then you added the goals.
Yes, and I, then I, at the end of the. Component, I add the goals and. Policies and objectives.
So.
And I don't think they made, because I added them as of yesterday, so I don't, I don't know if there were any changes that they made. Significantly to recreation that would not have been visible to me yesterday.
So. Everything else is going to stay in the recreation section or is that?
Well, that's, that's the thing we should, we should talk about because. I, I went through this. And actually. What Debbie put in here, um. She put it in on a, on, on the. A draft that I was kind of fooling around with. And I had, um, gone through and. And looked at a lot of these. What was in the uh. Text. And it just, it doesn't belong, it just didn't belong, I mean, there were stuff about fishing licenses, or how many fishing licenses, or. How many, what's the limit on different kinds of fish, all of which were wrong. And outdated. Two thousand two, yeah. Yeah, but. Yeah, fishing game tomorrow could change a little bit, why is it in a, why is it in a complaint?
Right.
Um. I, I just didn't understand why any of this stuff, maybe there's something there, say, well, you could go rent a sailboard at the Joe Blow's shop. I mean, okay, well, maybe and maybe not.
And you don't give guidelines and they do this.
The chapter when I was assigned that for my goals and policies and objectives, I thought. Why is this even in a complaint? This is a guide that should be handed out at the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know, uh, Jake or anyone who's worked in planning, is there any part of this chapter with the lists of all these facilities? That we would ever use for any decisions? Because as. Radical as it sounds, I'd propose that we get. You could maybe make an appendix out of it, but I would propose that you get rid of the whole thing except for the tech. I don't see any reason for it.
Is, is the recreation section going to lead to land use regulation or action?
Well. As you all know, my concern. When recreation. Comes to land use is that I do not want. Private property to be infringed on by public access. So that's mainly what I reiterated here, and that's what I put in my goals and policies, but the fact that there's a campground. Of at Ledgewood, where there's a picnic area. I don't know if that's necessary to be in there.
A lot of this has changed drastically.
Yes, and I, I had a very busy week, so I didn't have time to make sure that every single one of these picnic grounds and these campgrounds were still in place.
And if they are, so what? Exactly, they are, so like outdoor task force. Even if they are still there, so what?
Well, and if they are, they should be taken out, but I don't know how relevant they even are.
Exactly, that's the thing.
To the comprehensive plan.
Land use regulation or act.
And so that's why, I mean, what do you all think about what I put in, first of all? And. Do you all think there needs to be anything other than these first four paragraphs? And then followed up by the goals and policies. And we certainly couldn't be accused of not listening to the public, because that's straight where I doubt this.
It came right out of the plains.
I would, I mean, initially, I would say. At, at a minimum, it doesn't belong here, it would be an appendix. But then that still begs the question of. Why, how does it? How do we even hope to keep it up to date? And especially with the level of detail that you have in some of these. Like numbers of campsites.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm ready to get rid of all that, I'm, I'm moving back now to the verbiage that I put in. Do you see that as being appropriate? The three paragraphs in red and then the one in black was all that existed in this chapter.
Except for the uh. So one comment I'd make right off is, it's not just visitors. That use the area for recreation, those of us who live here do as well. Like probably, there's probably more residents that use. Recreational opportunities. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think both.
Right, it's both.
Well, actually, part of that paragraph came out of the pre-slate. Committee. So that one might have. Uh, I'm not married to the visitor's.
This is within our visitors, I don't wanna, I don't wanna discount it completely, but. I, I suspect there's more residents that. Engage in these, all of these recreational activities than our visitors.
Number of users using.
Users or, or visitors and residents.
Using the areas recreational opportunities. Why don't we just say, can't we just say, number of visitors and residents using area of recreation?
I mean, at some point in time, when we don't have the data, but. When, when we, when I get around in November to talking about the economic development. I'm sure we're going to talk about some data that talks about. The amount, amount of dollars that that segment of the economy represents and the number of jobs that are provided through that segment of the economy. Some of those are some real data points that could come back into here. And, and substantiate. The need for the objectives and policies that we have.
Yeah.
Cause it's going to be a significant part of the economy out of.
Right, but I mean, I don't, you think that needs to come back into this recreation chapter?
It, it could, because I think you could cite, you could cite that data and say, this is an important segment of Bonner County's economy. Therefore, it's going to maintain that element of the economy, we have to do these things to ensure that we continue to have those opportunities available. And support whatever percentage of the economy that represents. Right. It's, it's a way of putting some meat behind the statements, well, the number of visitors and residents using the area for recreational purposes. That it's put some meat behind us, with some real data. And we might even, I don't know if we'll be able to guess numbers of people, but we could certainly talk about the economic.
You talk about the economics, here's in the numbers should be in the event. If you're going to put anything.
Yeah, just make reference to, say, based on the, the numbers. This is the picture, and for those in the benefits, but, yeah, and um. Fishing game and private labor have.
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, I, what I think we ought to do is. We ought to take the current text. Make it an appendix, send it to. Send that section to fishing game. And then. Who else?
Do we really want to do that? Cause then that, you're kind of almost setting up an expectation that as fishing games regulations change, we're going to keep that section updated. I, I don't think. Don't think we want to do that.
If you do that, you're going to have to send it to everybody.
Yeah.
All recreation owners.
All right, I mean, I, I don't. Then, then why, we wanted it all, I mean, why would we even have it as an appendix? Right?
What's the value of that information? What is the reason for all that information being in the comprehensive plan?
So is it?
Is there anything useful for the planning department by having? The. That information in the plan?
So the only, the only potential use I could see, and I'm not suggesting we go here. Is if somebody was really going to do an analysis of. Here's the demand side of recreational opportunity, and here's the supply side. You know, we have. Ten thousand people who come every winter and want to ride snowmobiles, and we have five miles of trails, and we need more trails to accommodate the ten thousand people who are riding snowmobiles. And I don't think we're going to do that.
That's fine, that would be economic development, that would not be the county.
To me, it's both.
We want the county to establish more.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm just.
That's an example.
That would be an example of the sorts of analysis that would be where you would say, I need to know how many campgrounds and how many campsites and how many trails? And how many boat launches, et cetera, et cetera, and bounce that against the demand and. The conclusion would be, we have sunny, or the conclusion might be, wow, we ought to, we ought to try to get more. I'm not suggesting we do that, and so I'm suggesting, I can't see any other reason. For having all of that exhaustive list of all of the recreational facilities that exist, so. Maybe the only ones that might be worthwhile are the ones that are actually owned and operated by the county, and I think that's a much smaller number than.
What?
The total number you've got here, right?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's only a few. We have this extensive list in there now, this is what it says. Under recreation, an analysis showing a system of recreation areas, including parks, parkways, trailways. River green belts, beaches, playgrounds, and other recreation areas and programs.
Where are you getting that though?
Out of state code. So, but this, this is not the only one component language that doesn't talk about the effect of that. What are you, what are you going for? This is just a list.
Okay, but look, so this is what this has, all right, so if you had a list of, what's it say, list of campgrounds?
Oh, campgrounds, uh, uh, parks. Parks, parkways, trailways, river green belts, beaches.
Well, you could have a list of that. Without having this, like, look at this.
I know, it's, it's crazy.
Twenty-six miles. Priest River, so, so it says, uh, got top priest river. Toilets, got toilets, thirty-two foot travel trailer spaces, twenty-eight units.
J U P was obviously being paid by the word.
J U P. They, this was. Make a list of campgrounds and, and stuff like that without putting all that stuff in there.
Yeah, that would be.
You could even say, there's six public and fourteen private campgrounds in Bonner County, thank you, bye. You can even name them.
Or do you even need to say it at all?
To what extent?
Well, I mean, if you, if the, you know, the code seems to indicate that we should have a list. List, but to what effect? What do you do with the list?
I don't know, why they say in the code.
I know, this is the one component that they don't talk about anything about effect of. Development on this research. So one, the one that's weird. Makes somebody about to complete.
So, no, but this is, this was, I don't know who, who wrote this, maybe it was J U B, I don't, yes, it was J U B. But, but this is what, this, this is the way they're doing. There are neat, there's parkways and city drives, there are numerous city roadways in Bonner County, seven such tours are available. This tour. Follows so-and-so, this tour follows the Sally Valley. You even actually need private businesses now.
Yeah. Right? Yes, it's travel guy.
It's for the Chamber of Commerce is what it is.
So.
Oh, they sold it to him.
So what, so, do we, do we want to have as an appendix or whatever, uh, so the code is satisfied? A list of parkways which are in here.
They're not even.
And trails.
Parkway is something that hurts me. Whatever.
I think a simple, a simple list that would be okay without all the details. Note list of campgrounds. Put it in the, in an appendix, I wouldn't.
Let's go back to your part.
Let's go back to what I did.
Oh, meeting's over.
Well, I'll quickly go back to what I did.
Beaches. Yeah, beaches.
So, you're reading the part about beaches.
You should have, I do have a question, Mo, on the second paragraph. The last sentence, they're talking about businesses must be properly licensed, insured. And where appropriate bonded like all commercial ventures in Bonner County. I don't know many businesses that are bonded in Bonner County.
And, and what's that got to do with?
I might have gotten a little overzealous with cup copying and basing, it won't bother me if you take some of it out.
I mean, properly licensed, I can see. But.
So, and also, if you want to go with this red text. Um, just from a, a sequence pattern. The first part, that's good discussion. And then the last sentence in that first paragraph. Should be a wrap-up. Cause it's talking, okay, based on what we've, all this now, the goals and policies in this plan. Should strive to protect on that, that's good. But after, maybe talking about water-based commerce and other stuff.
Oh, okay, so take that last sentence in the first paragraph.
Right, because that's.
Okay, I like that. What, are you following him?
Yeah, she's got it. She's about, there it is, boom, look at that.
Oh.
Take that, where, where appropriate bonded. Yeah, yeah, middle paragraph, now that, the bonding stuff, that doesn't. Yeah, that's like saying, you must have a home ownership here.
Okay, get rid of that.
These businesses must.
So I don't even see a move on my screen in real time.
I wonder if you're looking at a different version.
I'm looking at the version that doesn't have licenses. Flash, but then I don't see a change in real time.
Yeah, it's different, you're right, it's different than what's up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me take out the rest.
Yeah.
Maybe we should take out the whole sentence.
Which one?
These businesses must be properly licensed and sure.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what I'm sure.
It's.
Yeah.
So Debbie, the other, the other question I had.
Okay.
Okay, so the last sentence now at the top here, as the area's population and visitation inevitably increases. There will be greater need pressure to identify areas of business. Where was it? It talked, one, talked about access. Um, that, that I said today.
Yeah, protect access to recreational opportunities while development occurs.
Does that conflict with the goals?
No. I don't think so, because I think the goal, that was why I was so adamant, or was it a goal that we did or was it?
Policy, it's a policy.
That's why I was so adamant about the policy being so clearly. Because I want.
It's in the terms of it won't be imposed on a development.
Right.
This is proven. But if they volunteer to, or they're working into their own plan.
Maybe where it says protect access. While development occurs. No, I think that's okay, because we stated that we're not going to impose it.
Right.
But we've also stated that we're going to protect existing legal access, so I think that covers both sides of it. So I don't have a problem with this saying.
Yeah.
Protect access to recreational opportunities, because it's both, both sides of it have been. Clearly defined.
Yep.
And to say it again would be redundant. So I'll shut up.
Good.
I'm just trying to track some, or that other section, we're going to be in the appendix or.
I don't think.
Yeah, I think you totally resolved it. You want to fully resolve it. It'll be different.
It needs to be a whole lot, if it's still there in any form, a whole lot there.
I would, I would advocate for taking it out until somebody tells me why, the reason that it needs to be there.
Well, it, uh, to the quote, so follow state code, it does say there should be some listing.
But does it need to be this extensive?
I think we just have a list sixteen campgrounds.
You could have a list.
Five of this, seven of this.
Okay.
But I think it may be just as easy to make a list and just say campground. Here's a list of fifteen campgrounds.
Okay, I get you.
Without the numbers of campsites and how many fish were caught there in the last ten years.
A system.
I can do that.
We have a system? Of recreation areas?
So are we okay with this text other than that?
Yeah, I I like it.
Yeah, I don't think, other than with the changes we've talked about, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not seeing.
And and I would. I know, nobody probably wants to hear this, but I do think to some extent. We may find that this, back to my comment about the the data from the economic development section, it may come back and reinforce this. You might at some point put some reference, maybe you can just refer to it. So I think to some extent, this whole process may become a little bit iterative, basically get into looking at some of the other sections, because there are interrelationships between the different elements. Clearly.
We're all intertwined.
Right. So that's a long-winded way of saying. I reserve the right to have comments, official comments in the future.
Okay, so other than me going back and counting the number of parks and campgrounds and toilets, we're okay with this? Or do I need to differentiate between toilets and outhouses?
You better put in there who's going to supply it.
Hey, you're going to count them out. You've got the person who. Personally does it each one to confirm that it's set.
Well, I can't promise that before January.
Well, you know, we, we have, don't we have a new parks director?
Um, I think so, yes.
Yeah. Maybe an audience with the parks director. Clarify this stuff.
No, I don't have time in the next month for an audience with anyone other than a drywaller, okay, so.
That's what the guy does on the side.
Yeah, maybe, well, that would be a reason to get into that. So anyway, that's, that's my recreational plan.
All right, um. Okay, so. I, you know, I actually have a comment. I hate to do this, but. On the policy, one of the policies. In the. Recreation.
I wonder if it's the same one that is missing.
I think we just have overlooked it. I know we had actually had comments from the public. That it doesn't belong here, but center policies. First bullet point, the last sentence says, as development of the area's waterways continue. Public access to public waterways is being eroded.
In my version, trick in that language.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it's a policy.
Oh, you did strike it. Okay.
My version.
All right, right.
Passed it.
Oh, okay, in your version, right?
Which one? I'm sorry.
This, the first policy. That starts with encourage, Bonner County is encouraged to develop waterways. At the end of that policy, there's a sentence, as development of the area's waterways continues, public access to public waterways is being eroded. It's not a policy, it's.
Right. It may not even be a fact.
Yeah, it may not even be a fact, so I, I.
So they kind of use it all the version. That's not, that's not. That's the only understanding. So we discussed, we've discussed, uh. Those two plans, those two components. Um. And we're going to discuss those policies. Anything else on the comprehensive plan or should we? September twentieth, twenty twenty two agenda. Everybody with us?
No, I want to step, yeah, go ahead. Would you repeat that, please, Alan?
I think we've done the comprehensive plan, we've done the two components. We're going to do those revisions and bring it back, and then we got the goals, objectives, and policies that we're going to. Consider next. Next meeting. Uh, and I see here there's a discussion items, September twentieth, twenty twenty two agenda items.
Um.
No?
No.
Okay. Anything else, uh?
Maybe.
Anything else for the good and the cause here?
Just briefly. What would you plan to do, Swati, about how you're going to present? The final version, if you will, for for us and the public for the twentieth?
Twenty years.
Are you going to go ahead and accept all these changes and make kind of a clean copy?
I'll make a clean copy.
Okay.
I'll do a copy as soon as I can after tonight.
Okay.
Um, and then. Yeah, we'll just. Talk about it on many years because it's a continuation of previous healing.
Right.
The presentation, stuff, presentation has already been made, but it will be available for the public to view. After. Tonight, but tomorrow.
Whenever you get done. We.
So where are you going, where are you going to post it?
On the website with the, with the file number AM zero zero one two dash twenty two.
Under what?
It will be, uh, under current project, sudden projects revision three. It will be revision three, so that will be the final.
Other applications or?
Other applications, yeah.
Good.
We, 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 the race thing has developed.
You think it's an open?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. It's right up the, at the top. They're not informed, there's like the. Think you're right.
Yeah, it's not important, say, you see it, it's on the website, right, and somebody goes with the.
There's a list of each one, each document is a hyperlink that they click on.
I can bring it up here if you.
Yeah. It's just. About how he answers. County planning and.
Oh, not.
I just said, I mean, this was.
He took it out.
No, these are, these, these are pretty.
Comment, which may or may not even be correct.
Okay.
Not a policy. There's nothing to do with the policy.
Right.
Actually, if you're smart enough to be able to do this.
If you have not a quick email today and.
Oh, we're out your fingers, right there.
Somebody went to Bonner County, ID dot gov. They go to departments, they go to. Planning here. It will take them to the Bonner County planning page. And then from here on the left-hand side, they can go to current projects.
Full color.
And we're, this is, it will be files, AM zero zero one two dash twenty two.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And they are right up to you. So, so after tonight, the final version will be posted as division three with today's date.
And why are you going to post the, um. These drafts of these two components to work.[1752.91]